Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack Mutual Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Okay, welcome everybody to the June 9th special meeting of the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners. I'll call the meeting to order on June 9th today, 2020, at 4:39 PM. And we can all rise to to conduct the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just some announcements, due to COVID-19 and the state of emergency, the public participation will be offered by telephone. Public can also watch the meeting via video, which can be accessed at www.mvdwater.org. A recording of the meeting will be available on Merrimack TV at a later date. And you may participate by calling in at 1-646-876-9923. And enter meeting ID 89121595375. And all of that information I just read should be on the agenda on the mvdwater.org website. If you want to pull up the agenda for today's meeting, that information is on there. So I wanted to also express thanks to Merrimack TV for their courtesy to record this meeting. And I think we can start with a roll call of the board members. I'm Dawn Preventure, the Chair, and I'm coming to you from my home on 6 Warsman Heights. We have another Commissioner Wolf, and you're calling in from where?
I'm from Shane, calling from home in Merrimack.
Okay, and then we have Ken Ayers. Ken, you are at the MVD office?
Is that it?
Correct, okay. And we have excluded, two commissioners cannot attend tonight. They are excused, and that is Tony Pellegrino and Joe Comer. So the first thing on the agenda today, this is a special meeting, was to discuss capital projects with Underwood Engineers. And I think the first thing we're going to talk about is well 7 and 8, the treatment plant bids to award that project. So go ahead and take it from here. Okay, Peter, you go ahead and... Go ahead, Peter.
Okay. Yep, so the sort of the bid summary on well 7 and 8, we opened up the bids on May 27th. There was three bidders. The low bidder was Infrastructure Construction Corporation, which is a smaller company. But they have good references and that type of thing. So we have recommended award to them. Their president will actually be the individual on site. So he will be the project manager slash superintendent on the site. The Infrastructure Construction Corp's low bid was 3.536 million. The engineer's estimate was 3.493 million. So they were approximately, what? So that's $43,000 over our estimate. And then the average bid was 3.668 million. So the numbers are very close to each other. So I think it was a competitive bid, and you got a realistic value on that.
How many bids did we get, Peter?
Three bids. Infrastructure Construction Corp, they included a credit. We had a bid item in there for removing one of the vessels. So we'd get rid of the lag vessel. And their credit was $300,000 for that. The line item for the entire treatment system was $1,080,000. So if you're only, if you're taking 300 off of that, you're still going to spend $780,000 for one vessel and the pipe rack. So I think a lot of, you know, we recommend, you know, putting in both vessels. We think the cost would be very high if you tried to do that at a later date. One for just getting the vessel, two for the building modifications, and three for the shipping costs. We found out that the shipping costs were $50,000 to $100,000. And because the vessels are coming from Iowa, and, you know, they're a extra wide and high load due to the size of the diameter of the vessels. So they, you know, have to ask special escorts, special permits for the highway and all that kind of stuff. So they, you know, if you're able to get that for one vessel, just having a second vessel, I think the only difference on truck or transportation costs is probably an additional police officer with the second truck. So at least we recommended, you know, not taking that $300,000 credit. The overall budget, the total cost for construction and engineering is over the current appropriations. And we are looking to, you know, I think that would be rectified at the district meeting that has been postponed until July 7th. So those warrant articles could be combined with, provide you more flexibility as we are talking at other meetings. And DES would like to have that with their funding. The other... Then the, one other item that came up is GAC warranty. This came up at the, sort of near the end of the bidding phase. So we put together a warranty for the project based on the RSSCT that we did with EPS as part of our design phase services. Evoqua also asked to have some water so they could run their own RSSCT. So once they got the results of that, they did not think they could meet the warranty that we had in the specifications. So we talked a little bit about that, and we decided to move on with the bids as planned. And Evoqua said they would be willing to run a second RSSCT. So we shipped water to them. They're, we're expecting to have results back from them on June 19th, or that's a Friday, so it's either that or early the week after. And I, in review of, you know, the different results, we got talking with them and with EPS on what might be some of the reasons for that. And they both use the same ASTM method for running the RSSCT. However, what they do different is how they scale the test down to the RSSCT. So there's a couple of different methods for that. The EPS one, you know, when we were speaking with them, they feel that the method that they use better correlates to the actual full-scale result, you know, bed life results that you would get for before removal. So, you know, we feel comfortable with that. Evoqua uses a different method. The, you know, the method that they use gives you results in a shorter timeframe compared to the method that EPS uses, and the results are typically more conservative. So I'm not surprised that, you know, they're getting estimated shorter bed life than we are. And then there's limited...
Peter? Sorry, Wolf here. So is there any possibility that this would indicate that the vessel capacity has not been, you know, including the sufficient safety factors or tolerances and buffers that we might need? That has me a little bit worried.
The RSSCTs are an estimate of how much you're going to get for bed life. And we're not sure, you know, or positive exactly what's going to happen with that. And then the one last thing I was going to note, and this relates exactly to it, is there's very limited information on which method better predicts the short chains. They said that a lot of people aren't looking at the short chains right now, where we're asking some questions about that. So we're somewhat on that, you know, if you want to call it leading edge of, you know, is analyzing the short chains. And we don't, you know, we don't have, you know, we can't give your exact, you know, estimates on that. So that's the, you know, sort of the best information we have. We thought that running a third RSSCT would, you know, be beneficial in the sense of you having a lot more data points right now to, you know, project and to try to correlate some of these RSSCTs to actual, you know, conditions once we get the system up and running.
Let me, can I jump in for a second too? Maybe to help answer or help sort of explain what I think's happening? But Underwood, on your behalf, used EPS out of Florida, who's an independent organization. And we tested three carbons, I think, Pete, right? No, I think it's three. So what we do know is we have selected, Merrimack is proposing to use the carbon that is most efficient, has the best performance. We know that, that's what we have. You are getting information from the vendor, who was selected to be, because we wanted that carbon, doing their own test with a slightly different method, as Peter's explaining, saying that they're not, they may not get the life of the carbon that the independent lab said. So we chose to say, well, that's you with your information said, well, you know, we're going to stick to this warranty that we all agreed to in the beginning. And they said, okay, we'll run it again. And then, and so that's where we're at now. But you just got to keep in mind, it's their test being performed by them using the method that they choose. So Wolf, the carbon, and because these are the questions I asked too when we had several discussions internally, we still have the right carbon. It's really just a question of the life of it. And because Merrimack's taking a, proactively looking at a lot of the PFAS removal, even the short chains, there's been a lot of questions because there's less data and less information on those, which is what, you know, which is what Peter's suggesting as well. So, you know, with limited information, we're trying to establish what we think is a reasonable warranty. We've, we talked about a couple of choices here. One, you know, if we know we've got the best carbon, it's going to have the life it has based on the breakthrough we get. And in worst case, if we find out that that carbon wasn't the best, we know we can switch it in the next, you know, next change out. But what we didn't want to do yet was use the data from the vendor, you know, who's really not looking at it independently like EPS is. With, before we made any changes, we wanted to have some more information. So we're in the position now that Peter and Underwood is just letting you know that this has been raised. I think in their bid, they actually suggested that they can't meet the warranty. So we're now bringing it to you to sort of inform you. And then knowing that depending on the timing of the award, we may have new RSSCT data from them that could change their position or not. We don't know. But that is kind of where we're at. It was a curve ball thrown in the 11th hour. Pretty, you know, unfortunate and disappointing because I remember when Peter and Lennox called me a few days before the bids were due when they raised this issue. So, but, but we do believe the carbon that's selected is the, you know, the best performing carbon based on the, you know, the water quality that's in Merrimack.
I guess my question is more geared towards the filter capacity, the media capacity. My understanding is that the size of the filter is also influencing how long the media might last, right? So if the...
It's all bed volumes, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So the size of vessel doesn't really matter to that?
Right. It's, we, yeah, it's based on bed volumes. The fact that it's a bigger vessel will give you a longer runtime, but it's, the carbon will exhaust based on the amount of water that passes through per bed, by bed volume.
It's all, it's all based on the cubic feet of media in the vessel, basically, correct? Or, yeah, basically. Okay.
And I think that's what I'm saying. So wouldn't a vessel with a higher amount of cubic feet allow for that warranty to be easier met?
Because they know that they measure it in bed volumes and not actual gallons.
Okay.
All right. One of the, one of the things that plays into this a little bit, Peter mentioned it, is if you are in the position to award this contract now, we have a, we have a warranty issue. If, if because, which we knew this would exceed the $3.6 billion authorization, which is why we have that housekeeping article pending, if because of that, we can't award this thing right now, and that's something we had to ask you guys about too, then we may have a little bit more time to get this new RSSCT data back from them to see that they would honor the warranty. It gives us a little bit more time. So I think one of the questions that plays in here is, are we in the position to be able to award this? Or do we have to wait anyway because of the warrant article question? What, say that again, what warrant article are you...
So the way we're looking at this is you have two warrant articles. One was for 3.6 million at 7 and 8. This project, if you award this, will exceed that article for 7 and 8. It's higher than the 3.6. Do you have the authority to do that?
40,000 or something more, was it?
No, because you have to add engineering in too, Dawn. So, so do you have the, are you, can you award it when you know it exceeds 3.6? You've already paid for the design, so by awarding, and you're going to, we're going to have a construction phase contract in front of you too. But if you add the construction in, you are, you know, you're well over. It's over 4 million. So, so the question is, if you don't have the authority to do that without the warrant article, we thought we were going to have annual meeting next week, right? So it was all going to line up, but it got delayed again, which means your housekeeping article won't have been acted on.
Can we vote to take that additional money from a different account? And we can do that, right? I mean, we're 1.8 million dollars short on wells 4 and 5. I know that wasn't a warrant, but we were able to come up with funding.
That is the question, like capital reserves or something? Even if it's temporary? That's the question. But then the other thing to, just to, that's out there is ICC, the low bidder, he was reading the fine print of Evoqua's quote to them. And inside that quote, it said, "We cannot meet the warranty." So ICC is very reluctant to sign a contract with you until the warranty issue straightens out because all of a sudden, he's taking on, you know, the responsibility to meet in the warranty when the manufacturer, you know, the treatment system manufacturer is not going to back it up. So it'd be on his nickel if it doesn't meet it. So he's interested in seeing what happens with the second RSSCT and what happens with the warranty, you know, after that. So if we, if you approve that today and when we sign the notice of award and we ship the notice of award to them that they would have to, you know, sign within 10 days, I'm not sure if they would, you know, be wanting to sign that.
Right. So we got additional RSSCT results coming back in? Is that what I'm hearing? And that's going to hopefully line up better with our initial warranty that we were looking for, hopefully?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping, yeah.
When are those due? Any idea how...
That was June, yeah, June 19th, next Friday or early in the week after that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So before the end of the month, definitely. So I think it, it does line up nicely in the sense that we're going to get those RSSCT results a couple of weeks before your, you know, scheduled district meeting. So we hopefully can straighten out those warranty issues in now, in that two-week period. So that, that is, that item has been resolved. And when, you know, then when, you know, you have the meeting and everything goes as planned on the meeting and you can go ahead with award, then ICC will sign the award.
This is Ken. So we have our next meeting on June 22nd. Is this something we can discuss on June 22nd? Hopefully you have the results from the second test?
We might have results, yeah.
We should, and that would be, Ken, I think that would be our preference is that we get, we, we're going to give you everything today. We, everything will be lined up. But I'm assuming, and you guys can maybe find an avenue that would allow you more flexibility, but I'm assuming you need the warrant article passed in order to, that housekeeping article passed in order to award this. That's sort of the assumption I'm working under. So if that's the case, then you're, I think your scenario is the best approach. Let's get some more information, act on it on June 22nd if it's available, if it's ready. And hopefully it's, you know, it lands in our favor. If it doesn't, we'll be in front of you looking at other options. But I think, given the fact that we have a warrant article question, it allows us a little bit more time. It delays things ultimately, maybe 30, 20 to 30 days. But I think it's probably in our best interest, given where we're at.
And we could ask Evoqua to give us an update. We'll tell them about that meeting and we'll say we want an update that afternoon. So it might not be in your packet that you receive in the weekend, but we can get some of the information, you know, prior to the meeting.
How does this warranty compare to the one at wells 4 and 5? Is it, is it much different? Is there anything different there that's not, it's not apples and oranges to this or what? I know it's different water, obviously.
Right, yeah. And so the, it's funny, the, so what they came up with, Evoqua came up with a bed life that was less than what they agreed to a warranty for 4 and 5, when 4 and 5 had higher concentrations. So that really, like, that really raised a red flag with us saying, why, you know, that seems very strange, you know? And they didn't really have a great answer for that either.
And, and the answer is it was the same, it was the same, warranties were the same, the requested warranties were the same in both dock, in both bids. Right, Peter?
What? Say that again, Ken?
The warranty that we used for 4 and 5, was it the same warranty?
No, it was not.
Paid documents?
No, it was not. It was based on the RSSCT for the, for that water, for that well, so.
Was it slightly less than 4 or 5, or was it, do you remember?
I don't remember exactly, no.
Okay.
I believe it, my guess would be more because it had, you know, 7, 8 had lower concentrations than 4 or 5 does.
So we want to hold off on this then? It sounds like, I mean, if that, is that sort of your recommendation at this point? I, I think, Dawn, that if you're, if you're in agreement that you couldn't award it anyway because of the warrant article issue, then I think we just, let's just hold off. And we have time, the bids are good for 90 days, Peter, or 60 days?
I believe it's 90.
So we have 90 days, the bids have to be held anyway. Not that we're going to use it, but there's no risk in holding except for the time we lose. But I, I think you need your article technically to award this anyway. So that article is going to basically combine the two projects into one? And that way, we're going to be way under the cost of the both warrants that was combined with this one project? That's where you're going?
Yeah, so, right. And because we put well number three on hold, you're going to be under overall, but it allows us to just pass the money between the two projects. But if you, if you awarded it today, you would be exceeding the 3.6.
Yeah. I'm still not sure why we couldn't just vote to take that difference out of capital reserves. Like, if we didn't have, like, say our annual meeting was last week and we didn't have the luxury of that warrant article or something, if we were under, would we still have to do, we wouldn't have to do like another annual meeting or something to get that approval? I think we could just pay the difference out of our capital reserves, if I'm not mistaken. I'll, I'll put my experience to test here, and you may need an opinion on this. In fact, I would recommend an opinion on it. But warrant articles are written to raise the money and appropriate the money. So they're not just saying, "We will give you this much money." They're also saying, "We don't want you to spend any more than this." So the concern would be, and it was different on 4 or 5 because you didn't have that constraint. You didn't have a warrant article. You had a negotiated agreement, so you weren't bound by the voters. But I do get concerned when I see an expenditure that exceeds the appropriation part in an article. Now, housekeeping article will fix that.
I think, right, it does. But I think considering that the MCLs got changed, even though they stayed right now, that may change the picture a little bit. Prior to the lowering of the MCLs, I would agree with you. Now that the MCLs have, and these wells are no longer combined with the hemp shem sales, I think that changes the picture a little bit. But it's definitely the safer way to take the housekeeping article in place, voted in place.
I mean, we would have expected the number to be higher because we have a lag tank, which wasn't included in the warrant article in, right? So we have, we have some kind of reckoning to have to deal with anyway. Because, like I said, we would have expected the number to come in a little higher. Right, we did. We knew, we knew this. But we also thought you would be beyond your town meeting, or your district meeting by now. Months ago, yeah.
And then the other thing is, even if you appropriated the money, you know, if you did decide to go to that route today, ICC would still not be willing to sign that notice of award.
Right. All right, well, it's sounding like maybe we put this off and wait for that test results to come back in. Then it sounds like if everything looks better on the warranty at that point, at the next meeting, maybe we can authorize, assign the contract, and then it puts it back in the port of ICC at that point. And then we'll be past our annual meeting shortly thereafter. So maybe it'll fall into place if we didn't fall away. Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions or comments about considering just tabling this for the, for the time being, I guess? Go ahead, Wolf.
Yeah, in, in the 4, 5 project, and I think on the booster station, you guys had a listing of the bids of the bidding companies and how the bids came in.
Yeah, bid tab, yeah.
I don't think I've seen that in the package. Unless I missed it.
Uh, it's not in the package. We um, it was sent over in a recommendation package to um, to Ron, so there is one there. Uh, we certainly can forward that off.
Yeah, I would like to see, or maybe, you know, maybe Ron can, it doesn't matter, but um, I would like to see that too, just for, you know, completion sake.
So was this the only bidder that had the issue with the warranty or did that get identified with the other two bids as well?
I did not, uh, so the bids did not come in with a condition written on them. It was just the conversation that I had with ICC afterwards that they mentioned. You know, as he's starting to read the fine print of uh, of the PO that they sent them, they. Volca kind of stashed it in a couple of the back pages, you know, trying to hide it, you know, type of thing. And he was actually reading all the fine detail and saw that in there, so. I have not spoken with the other two to find out if they had the same, but I assume if a book was giving them a price, it had the same stipulation in it.
I apologize. What were you, what were you looking for, Wolf?
He was looking for the bid tab.
A comparison of the different bits, how they came in.
And that should be in that packet we sent over to you, Ron.
Oh, then Wolf should have it. We sent the full packet out in the board packet.
Okay, if you sent the award packet, then it is in there, yeah.
What am I looking for?
It's a, it's a, it's a one page spreadsheet. It would be in um, landscape print.
Is that the one with the black header in the very big, because?
On the, the title on the top should say bid tabulation.
No, this one says bid schedule, which is the bid schedule.
Yep, you gotta keep going further.
I don't think so. I went through a couple, couple times.
Don't see anything that references any other bidders except for ICC.
Either way, if that could be forwarded, I'd appreciate it. Email's fine.
Keith, have you done any work or Peter with ICC before? I don't think you have, right? You said there.
Uh, we know the owner, he's, Peter might remember something that he's done, but he's been around the business for twenty, twenty-five years ago. Uh, twenty or twenty-five years, so we have worked with him in other capacities. He's had his own company now for what, maybe fifteen years, Peter, I think?
A little bit longer than that, yeah.
Yeah, he's uh, so he's uh, he's capable.
Okay. Yeah, I see his resume in here. It looks like, was he around UNH at the time we were there?
He was actually, he was actually in my class. So I do know him from there. I, I just looked at um, at a PDF of what we sent over to you, Ron, and we mistakenly left out the bid tab. So that's why you don't have it.
There you go. Okay, uh, I, I guess if, if everybody is in agreement, I don't know necessarily need to vote on it, but it's just. You know, if everybody wants to just table this till the next meeting and wait for the additional information to come in. I, I guess I'm fine with that based on the questions that are still outstanding. If anybody has any um, comments against that or anything, let us know now if you have, if you want to award it today for some reason or. If you're okay with just tabling this, then we could probably just move on. Are you okay with that, Ken?
Yes, I'm fine with that tabling.
Alright, and Wolf?
I'm here.
Okay, I don't like, I don't like putting the schedule off a little further, but. Hopefully if it's only a couple few weeks and we can uh, you know, it, it's important to make sure that we get all our ducks in a row on this, I guess. So um, yeah, alright. So let's move on. I guess the next thing is um, Wells four and five, the uh, treatment plant. Completion schedule.
I, I have like uh, one more thing for uh, seven and eight. Uh, so in terms of the schedule, uh, just wanted to let you know that um, NHDES did uh. Concur with our recommendation for award, so they gave their authorization for the district to award, so we do not have to. Wait for that hurdle to uh, to go over before we award it. So that, that's a good thing. Um, the other thing is um, ICC is willing to um. Move this project ahead in terms of submitting shop drawings uh, on this. And they understand that it is at their risk for doing some of that work. And we can certainly review some of those shop drawings, but we would hold on to them and not release them. Until the contract was signed and then so once the contract is signed, we could release a bunch of shop drawings, so then they could start. You know, moving ahead. And so the one big item on this is uh, the town of Hollis. Um, he has already contacted the town of Hollis to uh, get a building permit. And in that, um, you know, in the process. Uh, they require that a trust shop drawn be submitted with the building permit. And so he tried to submit the trust shop drawing for the old plant. We, and that was an item that we actually furnished in the bid package because we wanted to make sure that um. The new trusses that came in, they had, they matched up with the fascia and the soffit and and the ridge line and all that kind of stuff. So we didn't want to have any like, you know, one inch dips in the roof at the joint line and stuff like that, so. That's why we provided it to him. So he tried to use that um, to get the building permit and they said no. And uh, they also told him that he could not do any excavation work until the building permit was in hand. And the building permit would take three weeks to get through, so he is trying to get a trust shop drawing. And then also was wanted to do a few more shop drawings to get those, you know, you know, ready so that. Once we, you know, get the approval, then we can release those and he can immediately, you know, or. Get his permit as quick as possible and move it along. So the only, you know, um, thing that you would be, you know, sort of out on the limb on is. You know, you know, our work to review some of those shop drawings in case the project did not go through. And I just wanna, um, you know, I, I've looked at that as like, okay, if, and I know schedule is very important with all these projects. And if we could do a little bit of work to save some time, I thought that that would be. You know, a decent thing to do.
I, I think I'd be in favor of that because it kind of keeps the ball rolling while we're in limbo waiting for the contract to get worked out, but. It, it shows a good faith on their part that they're willing and they seem like they're interested in working with us, so. That's, that's kind of encouraging to see. It's probably not a heck of a lot of time on your part, I'm guessing, just to do that, so.
But that was the reason, one of the reasons why we wanted to get our contract in front of you today compared to, you know, knowing that the. We were planning on putting our contract in front of you along with the construction contract, but we decided to put our. Engineering contract in front of you, so if you wanted to go ahead with that, at least we have a, so the trust shop drawn, we have to get our. Our structural sub consultant to do that, so we need to sign that, you know, an agreement with them after we sign one with you, so that was. That was one of the, the main reasons why we wanted to put that in front of you today.
Right. Is, is that on the agenda here? That, is that the ESR fifty-three?
Correct.
So is that a good segue to get into that at this point or um?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
The ESR is actually in the wrong section. It's behind with four and five. That should have been seven and eight. Did you find the ESR? And then, um, that, so that was fifty-three that I emailed over to you guys earlier? It's just the change of the um, ESR number because we had ESR fifty-two, so Pete, we had um, we numbered it to fifty-three.
So this ESR, new, new number fifty-three would be for the uh, construction phase engineering of Wells four, seven and eight. PFAS treatment facility. And that, that would be something we'd be proceeding with anyways, no matter who the bidder was awarded. So it's kind of getting a jump on that ball, jump on that ahead of time anyways. And you'd be working off of that, you're in reviewing your shop drawings for the trusses.
Yeah, he would be doing tr- uh, to trusses and some other shop drawings. He was gonna start to, to get some of those and we would just, like I said, we would. We would probably send back some shop drawings that were a revise and resubmit, you know, type of thing. But anything that was, you know, we were gonna approve, then we would hold on to all those until the contract was signed. We did not want. We didn't think it was just to have anything out there approved when he has no contract.
Yeah, so I'm just kind of leaning back. We didn't go ahead with the, the award. Because we're waiting on the annual meeting. Should we wait on the annual meeting? Or the next meeting for this one as well? Because it, this is gonna be paid out of the same funds.
But you have, you have, this, 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 right now, this still falls under the same budget. It, it would. It would be under the contract limit. You, you have three point six million. If we have just engineering in there, we're well below the three point six, right?
You, you can either authorize it all and just know that, you know, we're not doing it unless the project's going forward or. Really what, the, the, there's, you, you could authorize it by task. I mean, you have some, you have some options here if you want to just sort of control what you're authorizing. Until the rest of the project's going forward. We only really need the first task out of it to do the shop drawings. So that's one way to do it. I mean, or if you just, you know, this includes the field guy like Joel, will be Joel. So obviously if the project doesn't go or gets delayed, that's, you, we're just not spending, you know, it just won't be spent. But this contract on, as you asked, is full construction services to the same level of service as we've been providing on four and five.
So I'm looking at the total, this, this should bring us right through basically um. Activation, snargy and everything, right? There's, there's no other, there any other contract.
Shouldn't be.
Before we were up and running and everything?
Shouldn't be. This is intended to cover it all.
So the only other question I have is that total amount here on this ESR is for four oh eight, two hundred. Four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred dollars. How does that compare to the engineering services piece of the number that was in the warrant article?
It's probably close, probably a little higher because the constructions, everything went up. So it probably went up proportionally or, you know, nearly proportional to the increase in the construction cost too.
Cause so, some of that number in the warrant article has already been paid out in your design services.
Yeah, 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 it has. And uh, if I have that number here.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was actually broken out in the warrant. I don't think it was, but.
No, they weren't down to that level, just a total.
Right. It was probably in the PFAS cost study maybe, because those numbers were used to develop the numbers in the warrant, I believe.
They would have been broken out in that report, yeah.
Right, okay.
Well, the prelimi- preliminary design was uh, out of capital reserves, like two eight. Was uh, like our, our skin of the game. So it would be minimal um, in the final.
Well, I'm definitely interested in, in at least getting um, the first task here, which I guess is task five. Approved, because that can kind of get us into the shop drawing review that you were talking about, I guess. Kind of keep the timeline going on this.
I don't know to see a reason not to go with the complete ESR because. For some reason the warrant article doesn't get approved and we, we're stuck not doing this.
Heck, we wouldn't charge anything. We're not doing any of that work. We're not charging anything, so.
And, and if, and, and, and I don't think that'll happen, but if it does happen, you just, we just cancel the contract, you know, it's just gonna be done. Billy, to date, just be done.
Just in the interest of time and not delaying anything.
I'd feel better knowing what that number is. Compared to what was represented in the warrant article, but I'm not sure we'd be able to do much about it either way. So maybe it's just a moot point, just.
The three point six, how that added up?
No, more of the engineering, the four oh eight, two hundred plus whatever was charged in the design. So that all of the engineering number can be kind of uh, combined. What is that number and how does that compare to what?
The design, the design and the. The design phase, I do have that. Seven sixty-six, so the, design was three fifty-eight. And that included the preliminary design too, portion of the preliminary engineering. And then so preliminary engineer was sixty-one, design was two ninety-seven. All combined with this new contract would be seven sixty-six.
But was that preliminary also included two, three preliminary?
No, I, I proportioned it out. And I did check, that's seven sixty-six, Dawn. I just checked the engineering report, which was the basis for the three point six. It was budgeted as seven twenty-nine, but that was for a three point six million dollar project or construction dollars that were less than two and a half. But we're now over four and a half, or sorry, three and a half. So it's a million dollar higher construction cost. So it did go up a little bit, but that's why, but it didn't go up that much from what was budgeted in the engineering.
That's kind of what I'm trying to, trying to gauge here is quite honestly, making sure your guys' number kind of check out with what we. Approve, was, was approved by the customers in the warrant article. I want to make sure that we're not substantially different than that. Uh, so you said again, the two numbers was seven sixty-one?
Yeah, so. Seven sixty-six, if you authorize this contract as it's presented. Includes design and construction, we'll make it seven sixty-six. My, my notes on the engineering report was, it was budgeted to be seven twenty-nine. But that was for a million dollar less construction dollars.
Yeah, thirty, thirty-seven thousand more.
I, I mean, it seems reasonable on my uh, first uh, thought through this, so. I'm uh, I'm fine, I, I don't, I'd be willing to go ahead and authorize this, the whole thing now. I mean, it's, I don't see what's, what's gonna be different putting that off. Do you guys feel more comfortable about just doing the first task to kind of keep them running with this? That's fun too, but. What do you think?
Dawn, I, I'm fine with going uh, approving all of it today.
Wolf, any idea where you're?
Same here. Let's, let's, let's keep a move on, you know, definitely, yep.
Okay. Uh, is there any need, any need for um, Pete or, or Keith to run through the scope report? Explaining everything or, I mean, it's all written here for us, four pages, so um. I didn't, does anybody have any questions? I guess I should ask if, if uh, you can take a look at the scope. Is anything here that you need further clarification on or? If not, then we could probably just proceed with somebody making a motion if everybody's comfortable with the.
I went through it and, and compared it a little bit with what we did for four and five and what you guys are doing for four and five is great. I think you got a little bit of a message from us regarding the delays with the electrical panel. That we would have liked to see a little bit more of a pushy attitude, um, but uh. That we would have liked to see a little bit more of a pushy attitude, um, but, uh, you guys have, uh, picked up, picked up from there real quick and have, have done what needs to be done, so I really appreciate that, so. From my end, if, if the scope is, is the same and, and the performance is the same, I'd, I'd be one hundred percent in support of this.
So before anybody makes a motion, we have to say where the funds are coming from on this one, and I guess this is coming out of, uh, this drinking water groundwater trust fund? Or, I know that we're combining the warrant article, so I don't know if that changes where we're gonna be funding the project.
We have appropriated funds out of the warrant article from twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
And that's where it's primarily coming from, and that is partially financed out of the drinking water trust fund and, the operating budget and the bonds we're gonna enter into, into for this contract, right?
So we had talked about at one point not using SRF funds on this well seven and eight. And only doing it on well two, is that correct? Do I have that correct?
That was the original plan, but, uh, the, the state didn't, this, the state wanted us to combine them, so we're using, SRF on all the projects ultimately, assuming the warrant article passes.
So it's really a list of funds, it's the appropriated sum out of the warrant article from twenty nineteen. It is the SRF. And it is the loan ender grand from the drinking water trust fund, right?
Right.
Right. So if you wanna make that a motion, that, that would be, um, I guess that's where I'm asking, before we made the motion to see where we're gonna, to address where the money's coming from, basically.
Alright, okay. I'll make a motion to move forward with ESR number fifty-three. For the, uh, for the, um, final design and bidding services of the treatment facility. For wells, um, hang on, seven and eight, right?
Yep. You wanna say the amount? Four oh eight two hundred?
Four eight thousand and two hundred dollars. Funded by the warrant articles for wells seven and eight, and I forgot what the number was. Do you have that ready?
I think that's three.
Three. From the annual meeting of twenty nineteen. The, what is it? RS, R, SRS? I'm sorry, I'm putting a blank.
State revolving fund?
State revolving, right, SRS, that's what it is.
That's, and that's a loan and the drinking water groundwater trust. And that's loan and grant.
Right.
Right. Okay, motion made by Wolf?
Seconded.
Second by Ken. Any other questions or comments? We'll, uh, do a roll call vote. Um, I'll go first, myself, Don Preventure, I, uh, Wolf, how do you vote?
Wolf, I'm sure, I.
And Ken Ayers?
Ken Ayers, yes.
Okay, so that, uh, passes three zero zero. So ESR fifty-three is approved. And, um, is there anything else you got on well seven and eight or, um, well four or five?
I'm all done on seven and eight. Keith?
Alright, alright. I was muted, so good, thank you.
Okay, so, um, on to four and five, um, update on the change order summary. Uh, we presented, uh, that summary to you at the May, uh, eighteenth Board of Commissioners meeting. And there's been no changes except for, uh, finalization of the cost to, um, remove the organic materials and the credit for the well cleaning. In terms of the, uh, work on the building, uh, the, the building is fully enclosed right now. Uh, with the exception, uh, of the gable end louvers and a bit of the, uh, gable end siding. They're waiting for the gable end louvers to come in, and then once that does, then they'll complete the rest of the siding work. On the interior of the building, uh, the painting is about ninety percent complete. Uh, the plumbing, as in the small diameter HVAC and, uh, process, little, little, uh, system piping, that's about ninety percent complete. Uh, they have started running the wires for the electrical work and they have started the process piping. On the site, all of the excavation work has been completed, except for the last little bit of tie-in work. Um, to tie well four into, uh, the line, and that, um, cannot be done until the, um, well has been, um, uh, pump tested and we put the pitless adapter on there. Uh, the restoration work and the gravel work, uh, for the roads, uh, that will all be starting this week. Um, I did talk to Dan Tinkum from, uh, EGGI. And I thought you would want a little bit of an update on what they're doing with, uh, well four. So, uh, well four has been drilled and, uh, the gravel pack should be installed by the end of the week. Uh, development will be, should be completed by the end of next week. And a, um, EGGI noted that, uh, NHDES has not approved their preliminary pump report. So they're waiting for that, but they, they're hoping to get that soon and have the pump test completed, by Independence Day. And then they need, once they get that pump test done, then they need to, you know, crunch a bunch of numbers and, uh, submit the final, final design or pump report to DES, and then I'd expect an approval on that until, um, September-ish. So when, uh, this facility is ready to go online, it's gonna go online with, uh, just well five, uh, for the start. Anybody have any questions on that? So then, uh, so then the, the, the big thing, um, for wells four and five was the electrical delay. And I, uh, I did send out, uh, sort of a, uh, summary sheet on Friday. Tried not to get into too many weeds, but I tried to give you enough information, you know, so you can hopefully fully understand where, where things are, are at there. And so that the sh- you know, the short of the, I'll even try to summarize what I summarized on Friday is that, um, they had some delays in some of the panels that were coming out of Mexico, uh, due to the, um, COVID nineteen issue. And, um, some of those panels were scheduled to be shipped in, uh, July, and I think the last one was supposed to be shipped July twenty-third. Um, we have worked with, uh, Penta and they have worked with their subcontractor. And we're trying to, trying to get different, um, LP panels and a different transformer, which we should, you know, which would allow them to receive all the stuff by the end of June, which will, you know, hopefully, it would save a month on, on, uh, on schedule. So, uh, they, they noted, uh, on Friday that they would have new shop drawings to us either yesterday or today. Uh, we have not seen those. I did call Penta, um, up today and said, you know, what is, you know, what is the schedule for that? And he said he was gonna call his subcontractor again, and I just checked my email and I have not received anything, so. Uh, we still don't have the shop drawn, so hopefully, um, we get those, you know, tomorrow. I did talk to, um, our electrical engineer and he is, uh, available to the review those immediately. So we can get that turned right around and get it right back to them so they can order the, those, uh, those parts and get them here. So the two items that were, look, you know, that transformer, they said they can get that within a, a week or so of a approved shop drawn and the, uh, LP panel within two weeks, so. So that's where we stand with that. They did, um, also, uh, in that packet, I did, uh, note that they were asking for seventy day, time extension for, um, for the, for the work. I, on that, I asked them for some dates of things of, you know, when was the, um, order placed for these parts, when we were expecting, um, you know, some sort of date so you could kind of, work backwards and justify sort of a time extension. And, uh, what we got back from a response from them was kind of vague on, on, um, on dates. And I, you know, I gave you the letters that, that they gave, gave to us. It was really not saying a lot except for that, um, you know, they, the me- uh, the plants in Mexico that was manufacturing these components, uh, shut down due to COVID nineteen and then they have, can't come back online, but have come back on at a reduced capacity. Um, you know, I asked for some correspondence on emails and that type of thing. I got a little bit, but, um, you know, so, so they were at that seventy, you know, they're asked for seventy days and that was based on some of those components coming in, in July. So if we saved a month, you know, you can at least take thirty days off of that, you know, down to forty. But there's still, you know, there's still no, you know, exact backup for that. So then, you know, question for you is, you know, do we, you know, we can still battle them and, and say, you know, give us dates? Or do we co- try to come to some agreement that, yeah, we understand that there is something to do with COVID that is delaying these components and we give them some sort of a time extension? I still think that they, you know, if we got these components. So right now, the, the initial schedule was a substantial completion date of July thirty-first. That was the, uh, the date when we signed the contract last year. And, you know, we are all going under the hopes and, you know, plan of getting this online by the end of June. So that you would have it during, you know, all of the summer months. So I still think if we, we save that month by getting those two extra components, I still think that we're gonna be doing, you know, start up in July and we certainly could have that substantial completion date still of July thirty-first. You know, I don't know what else is gonna come up for delays, but I still think we're on that sort of a schedule. But I believe Penta is looking for, you know, some of those days just to make sure that, um, they sort of, you know, cover themselves in case something does come up.
And what happens if we refuse to give them that extension?
Well, we could, we could refuse and say, you know, you need to provide us more backup to justify these, these, you know. Well, right now they asked for seventy days. We said we need, you know, we would say, you need backup to provide us, you know, information on the seventy days, just saying that there's COVID nineteen, well, we understand that that's an issue, but, you know, just throwing out seventy days, that's just kind of grabbing a number out of the air, you know? So, uh, you know, typically with a time extension, you, you have, something goes wrong on a certain date and you rectify it on another date. There's certain number of days in between there and there's your, there's your time claim, you know?
I'm, I'm just struggling with it because, excuse me, my employer is delivering a forty and a fifty million dollar project on time. Um, right now, and we use Square D, we use Allen Bradley, we use Siemens ourselves, the same stuff.
Yeah.
So, um, and, you know, it was, we were able to do that by, by doing our due diligence and pushing for it and, and, um, we, I just believe that if we grant any extension, I, that they have to understand that any financial impact on behalf of us, or that, that we incur, right, any re-mobilization of contractors. We talked about it, that this is all, uh, Penta contractors, so it's really Penta's, uh, responsibility. But for example, I wouldn't want Penta then to charge us any, any re-mobilization fees for any rental equipment that's been sitting around for four weeks or maybe left the job side and came back a second time, or, you know, a, a troop of workers that needs to be flown in again or, or, brought in again, or, you know, job trailer rental, you name it. I mean, you, you know how it is, there's all kinds of costs that is associated with the delay.
Right.
So, um, collectively, everybody, except for this one supplier, has worked tirelessly. You guys, actually not the least, the two, the two of you and your whole team have worked tirelessly. We have met, you know, as commissioners, as M D staff, outside of the ordinary to make this all happen. And now we see delay because of a commercial component, I'm really struggling with that. Cause there's other commercial components out there that have to say a specification because there's a market that they compete in with each other, right? So I'm just really struggling with that.
Yeah.
So, um, they just have to understand that if there's a financial impact on, on, on us, that, we're gonna hold them accountable for it.
Yeah, so, uh, on, and another, just a little bit to add to it, that last letter that I attached to, uh, you know, to Friday's email, was, um, a letter from Ewing to Penta, you know, noting that, you know, their workforce has been somewhat, uh, reduced because of the stay-at-home orders and some of the workers have, you know, uh, spouses that work in hospitals and that type of thing, and, you know, they, so they, they have lost some workforce that is causing, you know, delaying some of their projects. I'm not sure exactly, um, you know, they might be just laying some groundwork for some, potentially some, some other kind of claim or, or more supportive. That, the letter really didn't say too, too much, except, you know, that they've been doing work in this industry for a while and their workers are out of work. But, um, you know, kind of getting a feeling that that's about what they're looking at doing.
Right, but my answer to that was, we kept them busy. The, the, the workforce in our project has been paid on time. So this should not affect us. The people that have been doing work for us had paid work to do, so. I don't, I don't see it.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have eighty people in our employer that, uh, you know, that's, uh, that's working remotely, everybody's working from home. And it, it works if you, if you, you know, if, 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 if you wanna, if you wanna make it work, so.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, of course, there's individuals that have been affected, and if there's, if they had field staff that had to go home because of, uh, you know, because of, um, family that is affected by that, I don't wanna seem heartless by any means. We had our own people that we sent home because they were affected. But as a, as a company collectively, it's, it's a really easy excuse, right? So, and, and I'm concerned about that.
So is there, is there something in front of us right now that you're looking for us to either approve or reject the seventy-day extension request or?
No, I guess it's more of, uh, just, um, just from you, some sort of direction. Do you want us to continue, you know, pushing them, you know, for, you know, backup data and that type of thing? Um, you know, could we just spend, we just use our budget, you know, doing that? I just wanted to make sure that you want us to continue to sort of, you know, keep pushing that, or do we s- you know, accept some sort of a time extension and as a compromise?
Well, what I would probably say is, um, that, um, and you guys know the contract better than I, than I do. But, uh, what I would say is we put the stipulations of the contract in front of them, saying, and, and, in front of them and say, if you're late, this is what it's gonna cost you. These are the damages, damages we're gonna claim. So, and then they can make a decision if it's worth it. I'm not sure if we should grant them a delay and, you know, watering down a message in trying to get this done. I don't, I don't, I don't see a reason for that.
Yeah.
Or even waiving these claims, because again, we, all of us have invested time and effort and not the least money. Um, to, to make sure we, we bring this thing home before, before the end of summer, actually long before the end of summer. And this is now one single contractor that makes us late, one single supplier.
Yeah.
And they have to take responsibility for that. That's what the contract is calling out. And if they can't deliver, they have to accept the consequences.
So then, I'll, I can respond back to them and, you know, and just say, where, you know, you need to provide more information, uh, for that seventy, seventy-day claim.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I want you to spend more time on, on, you know, being up to tail or anything like that. It's more about, um, the way, the way, I would handle it for my projects. I would put them on notice. I would make them aware of the, of the fact that they're, um, uncompliant with the timeline and, and, and contract that they committed to. And what the. And what the uh consequences are, possible consequences of that are.
Yeah, so they're not over the, they're not over the contract time right now, but, you know, some of their delays could push them that way, you know.
Right, and and that's the message, right? So it's probably a waste of your time to try and push them more as far as substantiating their delays. But, um, it certainly doesn't hurt to put them on notice.
Yeah, well, I can say, I could say in there that, uh, you know, if if you have it, you know, substantiating data. You know, to back up your claim, then submit it. So instead, you know, we can't really close the door on it. If there, if there is a claim, you know. They still have the right to to submit, you know, data if they still think they, you know, they're warranted that. You heard something, Keith?
No, I think I'm good. I I I I think I was just gonna sort of back it up. I think it makes sense at this point where we are to keep a little pressure on them. It's not gonna be, continue to be a big lift on our part at this point. But they already have played the pandemic card, meaning contract does have certain provisions for things outside their control. So both messages have been delivered. We've given them the the contract and the potential consequences of not meeting the schedule. And they came back and said, yeah, but it's a pandemic. So I think the question really is, are you really pushing hard enough to make it up and make a reasonable um alternative work? With limited time extensions and that's kind of where we're at. So I think what I hear you guys saying, Peter hears it too, is let's keep the pressure on. We're not gonna give any extension at this point. Keep the mess, our message the same and um bottom line is, let's just get it done as fast as we can. Ultimately, we're gonna land somewhere and maybe on the twenty second, when we meet with you again to talk about the rest of the project. We'll have a pretty good update on on where things are going. But I think most, well, we've seen, we've had a lot of conversations about the best strategy here too, but we have seen. Had to step up probably more lately than recently to try to look for some alternatives and they they have been working towards trying to get some things done, so.
You know how it is, the squeaky wheel.
Yeah.
And, you know, we all know how this works. There might be another customer that is pushing harder or that has more stipulations in their contract and. And they get the, you know, the the treatment that we're not getting and and right now, I think we shouldn't be just accepting that.
Yep.
I I, my opinion is, I mean, I'm kind of agree with Wolf, cause I mean, we also, at the beginning, paid them extra to have them work through the. So we.
That's right.
Yeah, but even make sure to try to get us to the point, you know, granted at the time of the pandemic, but, I mean. You know, we gave them extra money that's just so we can get this project done on time.
And the other thing that, um, it's not, wasn't necessarily, um, well, it would be, but on our agenda to talk to you about. But we were just gonna mention, it's coincidentally enough, or ironically enough. Um, Penta is, who has the same electrical subcontractor is also making the same claim on the Turkey Hill project. So we will be dealing with a very similar schedule issue um with them on that. So I don't know if it's the contractor and their subcontractor and their particular supplier or 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 what. But, um, we were just put, you know, we were just made no- noticed last week, I think there there is some similar type delays for Turkey Hill. Now, that's not as critical, but it's, but the same contract applies. It's the same contract terms and and we signed an agreement. So that, we need to collect a little bit more on that one as well, but, uh.
And I guess maybe we can possibly even agree that, um, they can possibly delay Turkey a little bit further, right? If that helps anything, you know, repeat as a pay Paul and see if they can use some of the material, which may or may not be the same item numbers and, you know, items that they're using. But, um, I don't think we're as gung ho on the Turkey Hills project as we are on the seventy day project.
No, you have more flexibility there for sure.
If it's a manpower resource thing on on on, you know, just the number of bodies doing the work.
Right.
Rather put those on Wells four and five as a priority, obviously.
Correct.
Maybe express that as well, if that makes their life easier. I'm not sure if it matters or not, but.
Yep.
I'm also a little disappointed to hear about well four not being ready until in September sometime. That's very unfortunate. Um, what what, um, I I'm trying to remember what the gallons per minute. Difference between Wells four and five are anyways, but. Can we run well five to essentially almost make up for all of the difference in well four?
Yeah, that's what Dan Tinkum was saying. He could, you you could increase the uh the rate of four, you know, so to make up for that, you know. So we only have a certain amount of capacity in well four, I mean, in well five pump. But we could certainly run that at, you know, at its maximum and and pull, pull more out of that, yeah. That's what we were looking at doing. We obviously talked to, find out where we stand when we're gonna be starting up. And then talk to Emery and Garrett about doing, doing that.
Okay.
Yep, and then I didn't wanna, um, you know, Dan was giving me, you know, some information and he had, you know. Somewhat of a decent, you know, idea of what was gonna happen in the next three or four weeks, you know, but then after that, you know. He didn't really, you know, was a little vague and that's why I just kind of left it a little vague because I did not wanna, um. You know, put words in their mouth and put them in a, you know, pickle or anything. But I also know that, you know, you've asked about that before and I just wanted to make sure I had some sort of information for you.
But to the best of your recollection, what he told you is that right now, the, is it still the preliminary report? That's, it, the ball's in D E S's court right now or what?
Yeah.
Response from them to proceed.
Yeah, and then he said he's, he said he was gonna uh give them a call tomorrow to say, okay, where is that, you know?
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that's helpful.
Yeah. And I did, I did, you know, forward the information to him that, you know, this is, you know, an important well to get online. You know, for the district and, you know, anything he could do to speed up the process would be appreciated by you.
Yeah, and I think that message hopefully is gonna be related to D E S because if we can't move forward with the pump test. Until they review their end of it, then that, they're the ones that are kind of holding things up right now, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, you guys have anything left on uh four and five or or anything else or are we, uh, covered everything you wanted to?
That was all I had there, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's good. Um, so I guess, I don't know if we're gonna need anything more from Pete and Keith? You don't have anything else for us?
I do, I do have a little bit on well two.
Okay.
Right, yeah, so, uh, so on that is, uh, is just a quick update, you know. So we're continuing to, um, you know, work on the preliminary design with the goal of, um. Submitting a sixty percent set of drawings to you by the end of the month, in the June, okay? And, um, the R S S C T that we're running through E P S, we're about halfway through that, okay? And then we, uh, just shipped some water to Evoqua so they could run their R S S C T. So those are, you know, we're gonna have those results both early enough that we can really be comparing those and, you know. That would be, you know, nice to, you know, sort of have some of those results too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one thing, you know, going back to the R S S C T, um. When we had a conversation with Evoqua when they sort of dropped that bomb on us with seven and eight, you know, during the bidding phase. You know, we asked, you know, we were asking some of the questions about, well, what are other, you know, what is your correlation between R S S C T? And and, uh, the full scale, you know, plant that goes online. And they said, it's, it's hard to get some of that data because some of it. Um, the R S S C T was done by some other group and they're not, you know, like the principal or responsible party. Might not be willing to give up that information. And then, once the plan goes online, sometimes they don't wanna give up that information, so they're having harder times. You know, correlating what the R S S C T is compared to what they're seeing when the treatment plan is running. Because because they can't get that data, cause people are holding on to it. And then some of the, uh, you know, the R S S C Ts were, you know, they did not run them. So they, you know, have a less, you know, less confidence level, I guess, with somebody else's work and that type of thing. So they're gonna be using a lot of your stuff, I think, because they have the R S S C T and they're gonna. You know, I think, you know, you allow them to, you know, see some of the data once the plans go online, that they can start to. Do a little better job correlating those two together, so.
So that must be for their private clients, right? Because technically, you know, municipality, that information, I believe, is public. So they could get that if they wanted to, but.
Yep, that's exactly it, yeah. So that, that's a, that's an issue that they're running into, I guess, you know, on their side. So I was a little, I was a little frustrated with them going, you know, like, you gotta have this information, you know, then they're telling me that, okay, well, we. We have some of it for different plants, but we don't have all of it to put it all together, you know, so.
I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're guarding that to keep their, their own liability down. And if they can get less bed volumes, it's just gonna, you know, be better for them and.
It it definitely is, yeah.
They're probably not, you know, forthcoming to divulge all of that information, cause it might show them that there's a, a big fat safety factor. I mean, that favors them possibly, so maybe some of that going on.
Okay, yeah.
Right, that's good. If that's it, then, um, I guess we can move on to other matters that.
Yeah, Keith, did you have anything else with Turkey Hill?
No, I just, I, the only thing the guys that men- mentioned, uh, to let me or to have me tell you is that there, there will be some time issues as well. But I think your points will take and maybe we can keep that in our conversation to see if there's a way to help so four and five. But, uh, uh, yeah, otherwise, that one's just moving along.
As long as that existing station holds up while we're in delay on the new one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Fingers crossed on that for sure.
You guys have any questions at M V D office down there or, uh, move along to the next agenda item then?
Yeah, so at least I'll just summarize my, uh, my action items. I'll, I'll call the bulk one and see if we can get some sort of an update before six twenty two. So we have that before the next meeting, even if it's some preliminary results. Uh, I'll send you a copy of the bid tab that we didn't get you. And then, uh, and we will push, um, Penta a little bit more on that, uh, that issue of delay, you know, so.
And you guys are working on the, on the other E S Rs, right, with the, the radio, SCADA radio technology review?
Yes. Yeah, and we, uh, I was trying to coordinate with, um, our elliptical engineer and then the, um. The antenna, you know, sub consultant, and we're trying to schedule the time to get out there, so we're hoping to do that this week sometime. But we're trying to, you know, everybody's just trying to coordinate all the, everybody's schedule to find out when they're open, so.
And, uh, the whole system maintenance and, you know, water quality, corrosion. Um, mitigation or corro- corrosion management.
Yeah, Tom, yeah, Tom Page, who you haven't met, is gonna be doing that work. And he's, he has, he hasn't scheduled, but he hasn't started it yet. So, but he, um, so there will be more to come on that one. And then the other one we're doing is the alternative to well number three, and we're sort of sitting tight on that, I think, until some of Jamie's work's done.
Yeah, on that, uh, water system maintenance job, I I wouldn't, corrosion, uh, uh, protection and so on. I wouldn't mind seeing like a little bit of a work plan or something that he has in mind once he had, has wrapped his head around how he wants to approach it. So he doesn't like charge ahead and, you know, burns through all of ours without having a little bit of a plan of what we're actually gonna see.
Yeah, and I'm sure he'll plan on having a kickoff me- kickoff meeting and that would be a good time to go through all that.
Okay, cool.
Okay. So, this sounds like it's a wrap, so we can move on to the next, uh, item? Any other questions?
Is that it for Underwood, if you guys are ready?
I think it is. You got anything, uh, in the office for Keith and, uh, Peter or can we let them go?
We're all set.
We're all set.
Yeah, I think the next two things don't have anything technical really to deal with, so.
All right, well, thanks, guys.
A lot, thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you, good night.
Okay, so we can, uh, keep moving on to, um. Next item is the, uh, commissioners to discuss the request from Mr. Paolo Gassi to publish a list of body even watering violators. In the areas that are patrolled. So I don't know if he wants to take the lead on that, but, um. If anybody has any comments to offer on that, um. I know we have a spreadsheet of, uh, some of the, um, locations that were issued. Warnings and violations. Um, our legal counsel has advised us that we cannot issue. Street address numbers in customer names. Um, but we are able to issue street names. So, um, I guess we can discuss whether we wanna do that. Um, and before we go further, I just, I did wanna mention, um, I did comment on. Um, a Facebook post from Paul and it explained, based on a conversation Ron and I had. That's sort of the priority on which routes that we, uh, assign our, um. Enforcement, it it's dependent on which storage tanks are dropping or are are. Which storage tank is being depleted of water? We've got a storage tank in a low pressure zone and a storage tank on a high pressure zone. So if either of those tanks are dropping faster, that require us to conserve water. In either the high pressure zone or the low pressure zone as more of a priority. That will send our, our enforcement crews out to kind of look at those priority areas first. So that, um, message, I think, was received well by Paul. And the only reason I say that is because he put a little heart in his Facebook, on my Facebook comment. So I think he understands that very well. So I wouldn't, I think maybe we can answer his question on how we prioritize which areas of town that we. You know, do the policing on. I think we can answer that question consistently with the way I did. Um, so if we wanna give him a response, I I could certainly cut and paste that information and send that to you guys, so you can use that as a template, maybe. Um, but as far as, um, you know, the, whether we wanted to divulge, uh, street names. Of where the violations occurred, I'm open to comments from anybody, whether you feel that you wanna do that or not. I personally, I don't see a harm with putting street names out there, as long as it doesn't have ad- address numbers and customer names. Um, I don't, I'd be okay with it if you guys have a strong opinion, otherwise, one way or the other. Go ahead and let's talk about it.
I think that the data that we have, if we're just releasing street addresses and times. A lot of times, the guys are on the same street. So for example, let's say, they know, not that there's, I don't even know if there's a four Greens Pond. But if they're on Greens Pond Road and they see two Greens Pond and four Greens Pond, they might put seven thirty P M as both. For both locations, because that's when they're there. They're not putting exact times. So honestly, the information, if we were that, the street number, it's almost useless. It's almost irrelevant, because they're gonna, it's just gonna show, you know, they had six main, six people on this street. At seven thirty P M, but it's not gonna have really any data other than that.
Right, I I think his request was talking about neighborhoods, so that kind of generally leads me to conclude that if we wanted to. Provide the list to him and it's got, you know, eight, eight entries for Continental Boulevard. Then that means that we stopped at eight locations and issued some kind of warnings or violations or something, right? So, and I think, isn't that what he's asking for, I think?
I was gonna say, if we wanna go back and read what he says, um, he would like to see a weekly published list of who got tickets, even summarized. Um, I think we answered it. We can give him, we can give answers of who got tickets, but we can, um, and as he says, even summarize by neighborhood. And broken down by commercial, residential and other. So, um, what he's looking for is, if you continue reading here, um. See a list published that would indicate which streets in which areas have been patrolled in the last week or in general, I guess, any, any, any week. Um, I believe people are concerned that they may be biased or profiling being done and only certain areas are targeted. For example, most commercial and apartment complexes use way more water and have automatic systems. So if I read this right, what he's asking for is to understand where we. Patrol at a certain date. And, you know, being able to look back at that and and maybe get a feel for, I would be. And, you know, being able to look back at that and, and maybe get a feel for, I would be, you know, controlling Conservation Drive, uh, like we did on. Sunday, as I realized, and funny enough, Sundays, I mean, I just think I saw M V D running around, driving around here on, on Conservation Drive, driving past ours. Um, and uh, appreciated that. So I think he just wants to see when have certain areas been controlled and are commercial and. Um, c- commercial properties as well as apartment complexes is being looked at as much as residential. Properties are being looked at.
So the tracking spreadsheet, we have all the service type data in C U S I and our, in our billing software. But that is not something we track on the spreadsheet, so it's literally just street number and street name. It doesn't have, I mean, obviously, some of them we can look at and go, oh yeah, it's a business, but. Have that, and that would be excessively time consuming. Wouldn't be doing, um, carry, you know, we shouldn't be spending a lot of time and energy on creating something, so what we have is what we're gonna use. Um, to provide the information, but we also have the um, something that Dave sent over to me today, which they've been using. But um, he's got it mapped out, the whole town, and each one has got a different color, it's got a number in it, and that, like, one might be. Two might be this one, this one, and they each have their areas that they patrol consistently throughout the day. Um, when tank levels drop or something, they may get a different time zone, do the timetable to go out, maybe um. Four thirty to seven thirty or something, that's typical watering time, just to, so people know, hey, your timers are off, need to have it reset. So I would not have a problem crafting an email to um, Paul with a book wrong to. Find how our patrolling is done, because we don't just patrol neighborhoods, they have a whole area of town, whatever's in that area, they're patrolling all the time.
And it can be random, is, so we, we will look at our SCADA system and see where the. Like five, it seems like the town wakes up at about five o'clock in the morning, because you'll see it drop right off. Um, thanks to the start, the usage, the demand goes way up. Um, so we, we can look at that, that data as well, and we, we adjust our times when we go out. Uh, for that as well. Likewise with uh. You know, if it's like Don was saying, if it's, you know, a lot of usage is happening in the regular pressure zone. We may concentrate on that for a little while, but we ultimately look at the whole system, you know. Traveling, you know, down Continental to get to the route you have. You know, we're, we're not going down with blinders on, we're actually observing what's going on, so we, we see somebody water on the wrong.
And I was just gonna say that, if you, you know, I can assume also, if you're going, say, for example, from the M V D office to seven and eight, and you see somebody on the wrong side of the road, you might even stop. Personally, and make the person available, uh, aware of, of the situation, right, so.
They should be noting that so that we can get back to them.
Right.
So let them.
So, so maybe we could, since uh, if, you guys are not well to hear at all, by the way, so. I'm hoping that viewers can make it out better than I can. But um, what I think I heard is that Jill said you guys have basically a mapped out number of ru- uh, routes. That are being followed.
Yes.
Certain areas to be patrolled, basically. Um, maybe it would be much more efficient for everybody to basically use the routes. As um, references on our tracking that we publish, instead of mapping out every single road and street. Um, to say, for example, we, we publish a map with the different routes. And uh, we track which routes we have um, patrolled on a certain day, which of course includes both residential and, and commercial and uh. Uh, building complexes, you know, apartment complexes and whatnot, um, and um. Basically, the number of violations that have been found possibly within a certain route, and, and that's the data we, we publish. It might be more efficient.
That would have to be created, because right now, the spreadsheet that we have isn't by route, it's not, um, it's by address, so that when Amy gets another. Another um, you know, violation, and she goes in and sees that they have one violation.
Yeah.
They're getting another violation, you know, at some point, there's finding that's available to us as well. But I mean, I think just providing the route map to Paul, showing that these, this is what they patrol, you know, during their patrol time. That's covered, that covers the entire town, so it covers commercial, it covers um, condo complexes, I actually. Three sixty D W today, um, with watering on the wrong day, we don't send, send out a notification, we call the management company. And that's, well, so I know Amy's called condo complexes. I spoke with a property management uh, company today, I also spoke with um, the maintenance department for a business here on Continental. Um, that was simply, they had the irrigation worked on back on May twenty-ninth, and that was the first. Um, information that we had noted, and they explained that that's when it got turned on, they were testing. And he, the person was actually unaware that it was going off at a different time of night. So he's checking the system, he's gonna fix it, so it's a matter of witnesses, we don't necessarily leave the letter, but. Someone here in the office or if the guys are on site and they see someone, if the field staff's on site, they will say something, but. Yeah, ninety-nine percent of the commercial um, buildings have some sort of timed irrigation, it's not, you know, that they're. So it's, we call and say, hey, it looks like your timer's off, and they, they do a order, it goes out, gets fixed, if we see it again, and we come again, if it hasn't been fixed. Then that's when, you know, we start looking at them hard, that they're just blatantly. Um, just choosing not to obey the water restrictions, but. I haven't had that problem in the three years that I've been here, I've had. Pretty much commercial, it's always, oh, we weren't aware that, you know, it was watering wrong, because. It's watering at night, so they might not see it, or it might be a maintenance person, or, you know, somebody might have purchased the property and. Something wasn't set up right, typically, they're very compliant, once they're, are made of, they're made aware. So I mean, bottom line, we'd be happy to um, you know, craft an email to Paul, send him the map, it's color coded, it's got numbers on it, it doesn't have our field tech's names. Um, and it won't, because if we've got one on vacation, we split routes and stuff, so it's nothing that's. An apartment, but um.
Don, I don't think we need to specify the technician or the employee that runs a certain route by any means.
I mean, you don't, you know, the police department doesn't tell you which patrol officer's working your area. So, it's not, I, I personally feel that we. I don't, I, we're not the police department, we don't, don't need to necessarily. Give out a list of who got violated, how many violations there are. I, I mean, odd and even days, it's been pretty much every summer, I, it's not a new thing. So I just think that. It's not called for.
I don't know, people would have a hard time too, like, if, say it's, you know, Babu's Lake Road. And there's violators all along Babu's Lake Road, I don't know how I'd feel if I lived on Babu's Lake Road, living my street. Out there is, is a violator, there was a street or something, that, I don't think it's a big deal, but I don't, I don't know if that everybody else would blow it up.
I actually like your idea, Wolf, of a, I mean, I guess I, I haven't I. I haven't, I guess, I wouldn't wanna post street by street, but if we had a map, that if we're gonna do anything. A map of the, of the routes, and just in the center of it, we can have maybe monthly, change that number of the violations. You know, do something, do something monthly, and you know, whether it's.
So kinda like a COVID map?
Yeah.
By account?
And just, we can have it posted on the website with uh, in a section with the odd even, uh, uh. By law in.
Are you referring to, when you, are you talking about like how many warnings or actually by, uh, how many?
And I guess we can decide on that, but I'm thinking just violations, so if you go and give a warning, in, in monthly.
I don't think that's something we can do this year, though. Yeah, and. The other thing too is, we're not. We have three routes for billing, they have four routes for that, so do we separate it, like what? Six, six, okay, it's six.
Tell them out to be the.
But then they have to track what route it's on, so that I know, so that I can update. Do we do the logistics as far?
Yeah, but, I mean, that would be, in, in your spreadsheet, you could mark each, each. Section of road, basically, of each road with a, with an identifier of, you know, additional column. Uh, which identifies the route, and then you could extract the data, for example, with a pivot table or something out of Excel pretty easily, you, you wouldn't have to do manual work. Except for maybe updating the map.
With that, it's just that the guys would need to remember to tell me what route it is, because other than that, I'm gonna. Like every single street name in there, then it's gonna be another spreadsheet to.
Guys, I'm, I'm totally against uh, spending resources on one guy's request that we are obligated to give him absolutely nothing. Okay, I think we give them what we got, and let's not create a frickin' thing that we gotta manage. For the next year, where no one else cares about except one guy, that we're not obligated to give him any information he's asking for.
I appreciate that answer.
So, I'm all for giving them the spreadsheet, naming the streets, no numbers. Who cares if it's on the street that they live on, doesn't mean it's them. Let's move on, I don't wanna create this nightmare that we have to track ten other things. Send them the four districts that we police, and. Send them this one time thing and it's done, that's what I'm coming for, and I'll send you the text that I put on the Facebook website. You guys wanna keep creating more work?
No, I don't think that, I think you misunderstood that part.
With how many thousands of dollars are we gonna spend on this?
No, I think I misunderstood, I think the idea was to actually take the existing concept and simplify it and not go out by, by road number anymore. By street number, but rather go by route, but um.
But that's creating more work. What I'm talking about is, you already got a spreadsheet, you delete some columns, and you email it to me, done. That's giving them even more precise information than putting the zone, you're telling them the street number, he's gonna appreciate getting more information. You know, that's just my opinion, if our customers are concerned about having their street named. Well, that's too bad.
That was not the point, the point was to simplify it for the creation of that information, in general, the tracking of that information.
I mean, I'm just concerned, we've, we've already involved our legal team on this, so that's, you know. Plus all your, your staff time, and we're talking about thousands of dollars here to give one guy an answer who is very frugal on. Spending customers and taxpayers' money, it, it kinda doesn't make sense to, to. To do something where it's gonna be this big animal that we're creating, and it sounds to me that's an animal, so. I'm just. You can vote on what you want, but I'm not voting myself for anything more.
I would certainly start with the letter, but I think what you maybe haven't heard is the idea of simplifying the process, not making it more complex. The idea was to simplify the process, at least I think that's what Ron and I had in mind, but um. Um, certainly starting out with an email frame is perfectly fine.
I mean, we have to collect street addresses and names of the, the, because we have to track for ourselves to know. After they have so many warnings, that they're gonna get a, a violation, right? You're gonna shut the water off or something, so we need, we need to track to the extent that we're tracking now. And, and what I'm thinking is, is just getting rid of the street numbers is an easy thing to do. And not having to create another process where we have to go and put the number of violations every month on the map, and what zone it was in and all these other things and. I, I'm just trying to make things simple, it, it seems like he was asking for a simple question, I think what we're giving him answers everything he's asking for. And let's just move on with it, I, I don't wanna create another procedure to follow for, for the staff, you know? It's just more cost for nothing, that's my concern.
Just for clarification, Don, are you thinking just this, like a one time thing to send him the information he's looking for?
Right, if he wants it again, he'll ask for it again, and we'll consider if we're gonna do it again, well, maybe we'll do it again. You know, just give him the, the, that list is kept essentially current, so at some point when it's updated. Then we'll email it to him, you know, like I said, definitely make sure we delete the s- the street, I mean, the uh, address numbers. Only give him that one tab, we can even delete the uh, employee who was.
It would not.
Who found the violation, what was that?
Sorry, I wouldn't provide him with the actual spreadsheet, I would print it as a PDF with only. Name, the date and the time.
Yeah.
So there's no access, and he can't change the data, it'd be a protected um, PDF.
Right, so street, time, date.
That's it.
Pretty much it, right? That's my vote, you guys wanna keep making more work for yourself, go ahead.
I don't, I don't think you followed, I don't think you followed my, my, my idea, but that's okay, that's okay, we can move on. If you want more, we can address it again.
Do, do we all, do we agree that that's, you, I mean, I, I'm just one commissioner, I don't wanna, you know. Steer you guys on, if you have, if you're adamant, you want something more, talk amongst yourselves, but. I uh, I, I, I'm not gonna be in favor of, of doing a lot more than what we already have in place here. So, do we wanna vote on whether we wanna go ahead and give them that information? Or are we pretty much in agreement that that's acceptable, just those three data fields? Street, date, time, violation? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that.
That he wanted to see the, oh, no. Don wants the street name, the date and the time. That was in the quest, so that information was we patrol the quest. Oh, yeah. Wants to see, wants to know the roots, I think.
Yeah, I mean. I'm okay with giving him that map too, that, that, that addresses the, the question about profiling, so he understands where. Yeah.
And also, it's, if it, if push comes to shove, I can throw that map. I can put that map up on the website if necessary, under our watering information. I mean, it's not, it's literally just, what, one, two, three, four, like five, six.
I think, I think the map is only necessary if we wanna share, you know, the, the fact that we have actually. Patrolled those routes, put, putting the map out there without any, any historic data of us actually performing those patrols. Along those routes doesn't really add any value, so I wouldn't do that then.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good on that, and I will, uh, if you wanna make an action item, I'll, I'll um, email the text of my. Um, description of the priority areas and how it relates to the tank levels dropping, that we might focus. Additional efforts on certain zones, I'll, I'll email that to Jill if you wanna put together that. If you, if you want to include any of that in the email, since I've already got it spelled out, so you don't have to spend time doing the same text description.
I appreciate that.
Okay, alright, we good, uh, so if we wanna move on, I think the next thing here is the um. We have to confirm the source of funds for the purchase of an easement from Elizabeth Wright in the Hollis, in Hollis, New Hampshire. Um, has a possible new well site, you have some background anywhere this is coming from, is it just some missing information or something?
Thanks. So um, this was originally done in, and the vote was taken in non-public for. Um, the purchase of the easement out of. So we just need to bring it into uh, a public forum, public meeting to, to uh. So we can, we can uh, remove from capital reserves.
So as you can see, you guys, y'all have the um, non-public minutes to reference, that it's been approved, um, so all we need is just the formal vote.
Just a quick question, uh, we're missing one of the commissioners that was on the original vote, that's on.
Good point.
Do we still have a core of three that were there?
Yes. Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, so you're fine, you still have a core of people that were there.
So was there a specific motion worded somewhere that you're uh, looking for here, or, or, I'm not sure what?
You can actually quote from the um, non-public.
Page three, top page three.
Yep.
That's the motion to withdraw a hundred thousand from land acquisition capital reserve fund?
Yes.
And that was made by Joe, who's not present.
I'll move. I'll move and then Ken, Ken uh, second again like you did last time?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
Well, I'll move, I'll move to withdraw a hundred thousand dollars from the land acquisition capital reserve fund. Um. Guess I should quote what it's for, um.
For the purposes of an easement?
Correct, for the purpose of uh, uh, acquiring an easement on the right property land.
They seconded.
Great, motion made by Wolf and seconded by Ken. Um, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, then um, we can call a um, vote by roll call. Um, I'll start myself, Don, for venture in favor. Wolf?
Wolf, in favor?
Wolf in favor, Ken?
Ken in favor.
Ken in favor, all right, so that motion carries three zero zero. And um, you know, the other things we have is uh, questions from the public. I don't know if we can monitor that call in number anywhere that I read off at the beginning of this meeting. I don't know where those calls come in, I don't, I'm not capable of receiving them here in my house, so I'm not sure where it.
Yeah, Jill's gonna run now.
Okay, great. And while she's checking on that, um, the next item is questions from the press, but I don't believe there's any press. Um, any other commissioner comments before we uh, go back to questions from the public? While we wait for Jill? Any, any items that commissioners want to bring up, any new business or old business they want to follow up on? All right, then I guess we'll just um, wait and see if there's any questions from the public.
There was none.
There was no call from the public.
Nope.
Okay. So uh, if there's nothing else, guys, I guess that's the end of the agenda. I already asked if there was any questions from the press, there's no press, so I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
All right, I have to run all the way upstairs to turn this off, so don't talk bad when we adjourn.
All motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded, motion by myself, seconded by Ken, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Roll call, myself, aye, Wolf?
Aye, Wolf.
Aye, Ken?
Aye, Ken.
Aye. Okay, meaning is adjourned. Thanks everyone.